Everybody matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Ronald Brooks.
Aye.
Todd Corain.
Aye.
Druar Cash Nalan.
Present.
Sierra Smara.
Here.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Town Planner, Adam Menard.
Here.
Staff Assistant Danielle Chamberlain-Roberts.
Here.
Good evening, this is the open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, March twen- April 11th, this is March 28th. April 11th, 2023, now called order at 7 o'clock. This meeting is being conducted by a hybrid format under Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. This meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person by remote access. The remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Vision. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? Being none. Accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please join me in rise and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available at the town's website. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, each of the planning board members, to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First in on our agenda tonight is amendments to Section 4.1 Flood Plane District of the Auburn Zoning Bylaw to incorporate updated standards, flood insurance rate maps, F-I-R-M, to ensure compliance as participating national flood insurance program community. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Druar Cash, Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye. The hearing is now open. Does anyone have any questions regarding this?
Well, one question, Adam, but the- so these are just based on the updated standard?
Yeah, every- all those changes are coming from FEMA and DCR. I haven't added anything to what they are asking, so I'm adding the name of the town engineer. Basically, it's being mandated. If those changes are not made, then our quart communities that fail to enact the necessary flood plane management regulations will be suspended from participation in the NFIP.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
No.
May I have a motion to recommend this? Well, anybody's gonna ask about this. Anybody in the audience have anything about the flood planes, questions? I didn't think so.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second the motion.
May I have a, uh, a motion to approve or recommend? All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
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 Myself, John Regan, aye. It is a vote. May I have a motion to approve as recommended?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Myself, John Regan, aye, as a vote. Next on the agenda is amendments to Section 7, Signs and Advertising Devices of the Auburn Zoning Bylaw. Proposed changes include amendments to the definitions, the size of certain signs, colors flashing lights on an electric sign. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor, Smara?
Aye.
Aye.
Druar Cash, Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions regarding, uh, the new bylaws or addition to the bylaws for signs? Being none, is there anybody on the board that has any questions?
No.
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 May I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Myself, John Regan, aye, as a vote. May I have a motion to recommend this, the, uh, changes?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Smara?
Aye.
Ron? Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye, as a vote. Next on the agenda tonight is applicant S and K Development LLC requesting a special permit under Section 5.3.2 of the Auburn Zoning Bylaw for a hammerhead lot at 375 Oxford Street North, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 40, parcel 97. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Smara?
Aye.
Druar Cash?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions regarding this? Where's Developer? Is the developer here? Please step to the microphone and give us a rundown on what you plan on doing.
James Smith of S and K Development. Proposing two lots, one conventional and one a hammerhead lot. That's about it. Very simple, but very small.
Is that all you got to say?
That's pretty much it. Very simple. It's-
It's not simple, but it's plain.
You have, um-
It's not simple, but it's plain. Does anybody in the audience have any questions regarding this? Please step up to the microphone, please. State your name and your address.
My name's, uh, James Barnett, I live at 370 Oxford Street North, directly across the street from this property. As you, the town, well know, there was a sand and gravel pit operating there for two years to make this a hammerhead plot. You flattened it out. As you also know, that strip of street on Oxford Street North is prone to flooding in a regular rainstorm. A lot of the neighbors would like to know, A, what type of dwelling is being put there? Is it multifamily or just a house? And what mitigation is gonna happen for the runoff of that property? They had to do some emergency stuff for winter, which they did. But as things get flattened out, as, as driveways get put in, aprons get caught, um, that's all gonna run down. And, uh, we deal with enough of that. And so, uh, there's just concerns as to what's going in there, how quick it's gonna go, if the mitigation efforts are- have been well thought out as that, as that section of street's kind of a drainage failure as it is. Thank you.
Developer, any comment to that? No, let him comment to his, and then I'll get to you.
Um, we're proposing two single-family house lots. Just two single-family houses.
David Sampson on the butter to the location. And my questions were a lot like his, but I was interested whether they're gonna be residential properties for rent or for ownership. If you can catch that, please.
They'll be sold for ownership.
Anybody else in the audience have any questions or comments? Please go ahead.
Is there a plan to replace any of the trees on that hill? Because since they were cut down immediately, it was a lot louder in the neighborhood from the highway. About 12 deserts.
So there will be some screening, especially with the, the way the houses sit. There'll be probably some fences to make it private for the two homes that are gonna be built there.
Could you repeat that?
There will be some fencing and some screening between the two houses that are gonna be built.
I thought he asked about will there be additional trees put in?
Sound protection for-
Sound protection.
At this point, we didn't, we didn't propose any of that, but if you'd like it, we would-
Basically, clear cut the lot right to the maximum of the property line.
We did, we needed, we needed to bring the grade to the-
Couple of trees on the east side, maybe. I'm not even sure what a property line is.
Yep. Yeah, right. But we needed to do that to, if you remember, it was pretty steep. We needed to bring that slope down, and we had to match it to where the property ended. So leaving the trees wasn't, wasn't, um, feasible to do. But we do plan to, you know, plant trees and make it saleable.
Anybody else have any questions?
How do you plan to stabilize the bankens?
We'll seed and loom the, the bankens.
And have you done anything to those bankens, uh, any of them yet?
No, the final grading hasn't been done.
So nothing has been done, and how long is the-
No, no, sorry, we did, we did slope them, and they've been loomed. And we did, do we seed?
Yeah, you hide receipt.
You loom?
I can tell you hide receipt.
We did hide receipt.
Tell me you hide receipted, what do you bother coming here for? You don't even know what you're doing. I know you hide receipted, I drive by it every day. You guys should know what's going on in the lot. Come on. The hide receipt is dead, by the way, 'cause I went out and looked at it myself today.
Right. And we did loom-
About that much more when you slope.
We did, but we're not finished with the project as of yet. I'm George Smith, by the way. PLS. And we do have a plan that we submitted that does show grading. Um, well, we did that a while back, but there is a plan on record with the town.
They don't have it.
Yeah, we, we did submit one. And we could submit another one if you want that part of this, um, approval. That wouldn't be a problem. Where we could show the screening that this gentleman wanted to have, we can put up arbovites or whatever, you know, else to dampen the noise, you know, to, um, keep things, uh, private with the neighborhood.
John, one question ahead.
Sure.
Just a, just a simple question. So this application is just to split the property into two lots?
Yes, and the, and the lots, if you look at them, uh, hammerheads can be very narrow. This one is not, it's very wide. So there's been others on the street that have been subdivided, that were approved. And this one here is, in my opinion, it's, it's, it's bigger than the normal hammerhead.
Uh, we have, we have hammerheads that are a lot bigger than these. And what were the, where were the other lots that were subdivided, uh, other than across from-
They were further down the road. I believe there was a multifamily done down the road, like, two years ago, maybe three.
Yeah, that hasn't been built, but yet.
You're right, that's true, that's true.
And- But essentially, it has no relevance what was approved there as to your lot and what might be-
Well, only, only that, you know, this one, like I said, is not as narrow a lot as you could go with a hammerhead lot. It has plenty of area, it has plenty of width to it also.
Yeah, the intent of a hammerhead head usually is on an existing piece of land that's granted with a 50-foot frontage, and people had some room up in the back. You skirt, wanna skirt these two lots in, and it's absolutely not incoming with the neighborhood in a way it's been for all my 77 years here.
Anybody else on the board? Anybody else? Go ahead. It's all right. Please go to the mic again. Excuse me, excuse me. Please, please go to the mic again so she can get, no, go ahead, just go to the mic so she can get proper minutes. Thank you.
I didn't imagine if you put in two buildings in there, um, is there a road? Or what's, what's the ingress and egress gonna be like for, so is there an easement between two buildings? Like, how's that gonna work?
Which we can provide a plenty of children.
Alright, thanks.
The zoning allows, there's 67,000 square feet there. The zoning allows potentially for six units. We're proposing two. That's it.
Area-wise, you're correct. Geographic-wise, you are incorrect. Anybody else have any questions? No?
No.
I got a few.
If I could, uh, to discuss the, um, size, the hammerhead that we're proposing is 47,524 square feet, and the requirement is 20,000. So it's almost, it's double, if not better, than the size required.
You said the hammerhead is what size?
Your hammerhead lot's 20,000.
It's only 20,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, right, it was reverse, I'm sorry, I was looking at that backwards. So, yeah, the hammerhead's 20,000. Uh, 274. And the single lot, the requirement's 10,000, and we're 47,524. So, quite a bit larger. I mean, technically, that could, we can move the lines. No, it's the slope that drives that. Yeah.
So you were here, were you here when you originally came a couple of years ago before the board?
Yes, we were, we were, yes, I was here.
And Adam, what was the finding, kinda that, we didn't grant anything, we just-
There was an air and a dawn at one point, and there was also an earth removal that was withdrawn. An earth removal special permit that was withdrawn.
But I think, as I remember it, we talked about clear cutting, cutting all the trees and all of that kinda stuff, and slopes that would remain. But it just seems like you just went right ahead. You circumvented this and then went to the Highway Department or wherever you went for approval to do what- You didn't get approval to do what you did with the earth removal?
Yeah, the approvals were with a single-family lot.
Not a hammerhead?
No.
So you, you did the removal, and all that you did with the gravel with the intention to building a sim- a single-family house?
We, we had intentions of doing that, yes.
And now you're coming with a, a hammerhead also?
Because the lot is, um, meets those requirements, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm good. Yeah.
Hey, so on this lot, I went out and took a long look at it today. When you first came here, we denied your permission to do what you, what you did. I specifically said, and I said this myself, you cannot set up a gravel operation with screening plants and everything in the neighborhood, and you went ahead and did it.
We weren't denied.
Circumvented, uh, you circumvented the plan?
We were not denied the permit.
You were denied by us?
No, we pulled out without prejudice.
Pardon me?
We pulled out without prejudice.
Okay.
We threw without prejudice to our board.
Right.
But we were not denied.
You were by this board, that's why you withdrew without prejudice. So my question is, is another one on the drainage, like the gentleman brought up before. Your lot slopes from the furthest point in to the east, all the way to Oxford Street. It's a straight shot coming down the, the steep, steep slope you have between the lots. It comes down that slope and it goes right out to the street. You cannot grade a lot like that and dump the water on the street 'cause it didn't go there before. And you cannot increase the flow to the street or any other neighboring property.
If you looked at the slope prior to, it was a lot steeper. It was almost a vertical hill.
What was on the lot?
There were trees that-
Trees, underbrush, undergrowth.
And some of those trees were falling onto the properties that-
Did not have the runoff there. Now, when you put a hammerhead lot in with a driveway and a roof, there's a lot more impervious area on the lot.
Which will, we will do the drainage designs to meet the current regulations.
And how, how do you plan to maintain that slope?
It's gonna be a 6% slope on the lots. You got a three to one slope on the sides.
Okay.
To get to a 6% slope off the road, which is a very gentle slope.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing.
Right. Well, I'm just, and like I said, I do have those plans we could show you.
My question is, if, if you do get the permission to do the hammerhead lot after you meet all the requirements, how in God's name are you gonna build a house behind it? How are you gonna get to it? You gonna build a 30-foot retaining wall?
No, 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 this is gonna, it's, it's, it's a 6% slope on both.
It's not a 6% slope from the south part of that property to the edge of your hammerhead lot, that's the three to one.
I think if we show you a plan with topography on it, you'll see that where the houses are built is gonna be on a slope no more than 6%. We can show it on plan so you can see it.
The house may be built on a 6% slope, but how do you get there through a three to one slope?
Oh, no, 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 we're not getting there through, we're, both driveways are up the middle on that 6% slope.
Your three to one slope, where Lot 2B is, right where it says 47,524 square feet, that slope is from the property line almost to the edge of your hammerhead lot.
It, it's not in the area, it's not in the area of the driveways, and it's not in the area of the houses. And again, we can show you on a plan what that design would be, what it would look like.
We're gonna have to see grading plans.
Not a problem.
And then we're gonna have to send it out for peer review.
Okay.
But you did mislead people when you said this is a wide hammerhead lot. It's not. Your entrance is .96 feet over the requirement. I wouldn't call that wide. I would call it make, just barely making the requirement. And I've gotten complaints from neighbors, I've got letters here. You couldn't have cared less about the neighborhoods with the dust. You didn't have any water waggers there to water down the area so the dust wasn't blowing everybody else's yard. Yada, yada, yada. I mean, if somebody called the DEP, we would've been shut down in a heartbeat. I didn't see a DEP number there either.
So if you wanted, we could make that lot, we have 27.3 feet in excess of Lot 2B. If you, yeah, but we could, we could do it. So if you wanted that wider than 50 feet, we could do that.
I don't care if it's wider than 50 feet, I just said you misled us by saying it was a wide hammerhead lot.
Well, honestly, I was looking at the, I was, I missed, I looked at it incorrectly here. I was looking at the other, which looks more like a hammerhead to me.
To me, what I think is needed is, it isn't fences between the properties, it's natural growth. Arbovites, whatever. At least six feet tall, putting them in, not the, not the little ones this big. You gotta give these people back their privacy. You raped the property, absolutely raped the property. Cut down all the trees, couldn't have cared less about anybody out of the butters. Well, now you're gonna care. Now you gotta get a plan that shows the grading, where the drainage is gonna go, how these lots are gonna drain, and you gotta show that they don't go to the street.
Not a problem.
Once we get that plan reviewed, I review it myself, but we're also sending it out for peer review.
It's not a problem.
And we're gonna, John, wanna see a landscape plan.
A landscape plan as well.
Not just larger trees or arbovitae, but brush. When you talked about the original slope of what that land was, okay, yeah, it was steep, but it had 150 years of rotted leaves underneath and all kinds of underbrush and things stopping it. I walked that probably every day of my life, and I never saw water come onto the road from any of those lots.
I do believe once it's stabilized, you won't have any issues.
You haven't really given us an idea how you plan on stabilizing the three to one slope.
Well, a three to one slope, we're gonna, we're gonna, if it needs seeding, whatever it needs matting, we'll take care of it.
Oh, it needs matting, for sure.
Yeah, we can do that.
And, John, and my contention would be, and I'm saying this to the rest of the board and everyone, that whatever you suggest, you do it and fix the slopes and do them, and then maybe a year later, we come back, and if everything's stabilized and looking right, then we grant the permit. Not grant the permit on the pretense that you're gonna do it and it's gonna work beautiful and come back.
So, as you know, with construction, you're gonna be ripping it up again. That's why we would wanna do it continuously. If you wanna see that three to one slope stabilized, we can certainly do that. We can, you know, um, but to, to stabilize it, then rip it up again, really doesn't make sense. For a, for a building.
Why would you be digging up that three to one slope on the south side?
No, we wouldn't touch that. We would stabilize that three to one slope to the board's, um, pleasure. But the rest of it, you're gonna be constructing houses.
Ron, we can condition this so that everything is done before they get an occupancy permit.
If it's approved?
If the grading plan is approved, and we can condition it so before they can sell this and get an occupancy permit, all the other stuff has to be done.
John, that has to go through the peer review first, right?
Correct, once we get a grading plan, yeah.
Right.
I've never seen a grading plan for this, ever.
Yeah, we, we did submit one.
Not to this office?
It was to the DPW.
Well-
We actually did a site walk.
Are you at the DPW? No, you're at the Planning Board.
No, I'm just saying, there was a plan, there is a plan on-
To be honest with you, they're pretty underwhelmed by your presentation. Totally underwhelmed. You're not prepared, you didn't know which lot was the hammerhead lot. It doesn't exhume a lot of confidence in me that you're gonna do what you say you're gonna do. It really doesn't.
Again, we'll come in with the, uh, grading plans and-
You have to submit the grading plan. You have to have it in to us before, the Thursday before the meeting, so we have time to review it. We'll look at it, and we'll send it out for peer review, yada, yada, yada. And when the peer review comes back, you'll have all the comments, which you'll have to address, and bring it back to the board, prove that you, uh, met all the peer review requirements. That's just how it goes.
Not a problem.
So, if you, or answer. Yes, please, just so we have accurate minutes, that's all. Wish I had a mic that people could just-
See, you've got a print, but in fact, I haven't seen the print. Do you all have that print and all the information that's on it?
I don't have the grading plan, but I have the subdivision of it. Would you like a sheet of it?
You've got where the driveways are proposed tonight.
No.
He hasn't proposed the driveway tonight, he's just provoked, tonight he's just proposing the division of the lots.
That's what we're gonna do for the board is to, this is just a plan that'll go on record, right?
Okay.
But we are gonna do one so we have-
What I'd like to amplify, if I could, to you, Mr. Regan. I sent you a letter, and I gave you a backup letter of what I wrote two years ago when I was told that they would be done in two months. And I pointed out to the Planning Board then that would be impossible to get done. They, they were saying 830 truckloads of sand in and out. I don't know how many they did take in and out, but they logged the place first, and it's taken two years. And I'm not sure what I hear tonight is the truth either. But one thing I am positive about, I want trees. I want trees on my property buffeted from you. And I want that-
I can't make him plant trees on your property, but I can make him plant them on his property on the property line.
Fine, but my choice would be between he and I, that they go on my property so that I can take care of them and they won't die within a year's time. You can imagine how quickly that would happen. So I'd like to leave that on the agenda for the next meeting.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are you the neighbor that wanted the tree man to cut some of your trees?
He did cut my trees, I hired him into the-
Just so I know where your property is that we're talking about.
You're positive you know where it is now?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I know where yours is too.
Right. All right, thank you.
So, gentlemen, if you'd like to continue it, I can make, have somebody make a motion to continue this to our next hearing?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye, it is a vote. It's now continued to our next planning board meeting.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is applicant Kimley, born and associates, requesting a site plan approval under Section 3.2.6.1 of the Auburn Zoning Bylaw for a self-storrs facility at 319 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 42, parcel 31. This has been requested by them to continue to our next meeting. May I have a motion to continue this to our next meeting?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Smara?
Aye.
Druar Cash?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye, it is a vote. Next on the agenda is applicant Easton Partners Incorporated requesting site plan approval under Section 3.2.6.0 of the Auburn Zoning Bylaw for a warehouse distribution facility at 190 Washington Street, Lot 1, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 34, parcel 4. They've also requested to continue to our next meeting. May I have a motion to continue this to our next meeting?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Smara?
Aye.
Druar Cash?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye, it is a vote. Next on- Next on the agenda is applicant Mass Ten Enterprises LLC requesting special permit under three point two point five point three of the Auburn zoning by law for a drive-through restaurant at eight twenty-four Southwood Street, Auburn, Mass. Oh, one five oh one, map sixty-six, parcel one forty-eight. This has been continued three twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, meeting. I haven't seen any new plans for it. I'm asking.
P W.
Yeah.
What do we do on that? Oh, okay, that's.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Doherty. I'm a professional engineer with midpoint engineering and consulting. Office is at thirty-seven Sutton Road in Webster, Massachusetts, here on behalf of the applicant. It's been some time since, since we first presented the site between snowstorms and in the last meeting, we had a business meeting and it's, so I figured I'd just do a quick, quick recap of the project and where, what has transpired since, since that last meeting. And then feel free to answer any questions that may remain. So, so the project is, is an existing site. It's a change of use from what was approved as a bank with drive-through, but was occupied by an office to a Starbucks with a drive-through. The site was originally approved, approved in two thousand and six with that bank used as, as, as the proposed use. However, they could not attract a bank to the site and Galaxy, the owner, moved his office into the site about three years after that. They stayed about ten years till they outgrew the space. In about twenty twenty, they moved to a larger space in Webster and it's remained vacant since that time. We did request a similar special permit for the drive-through restaurant back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, which was ultimately not approved by this board. And since that time, we've, we've made some changes to the site plan to improve the circulation. Also, changes in the environment that have occurred since, since that first request. We all realize the pandemic and, and consumers' habits and, and expectations have changed. You still see people, you know, going into, avoiding stores and restaurants and also wearing masks when, when they do. A drive-through component for any of these quick serve restaurants is a very important component. And Starbucks would, would not go to this space, you know, unless the drive-through were approved. Some of the, the site-specific items that I had brought up is that Starbucks, their peak time is morning. The remaining users on the site is a Chili's restaurant that doesn't open till afternoon and is busiest at night. A Taco Bell restaurant also doesn't open in the morning. They open for more lunch in, in early evening. And there's a dentist office that would be upstairs in this same building as the Starbucks. Again, they're very slow in the, in the morning when Starbucks is at its peak. The queue for the, for the, for the drive-through, we submitted a queue analysis that showed the available queue before vehicles would get to the street on this site is about four hundred and thirty-five feet, which is, is larger than any queue to any, any drive-through restaurant in the town. This site is also unique in that it's located on a divided highway. So it's only possible for, for people to make a right turn in, in a right turn out into the property onto Route twelve and twenty. The morning traffic, which coincides with the, the peak of the Starbucks, is heaviest in the eastbound direction on Route twelve twenty in this section. This property is located on, on the westbound of twelve and twenty. We submitted a traffic memorandum that outlined or concluded that between what was approved back in two thousand and six, being what would, would result, should the, the Starbucks be approved, the weekday P M traffic would be less than what was reviewed previously. The Saturday traffic would slightly increase, but by less than, than ten percent. I think it's about four hundred and eighteen trips versus three hundred and ninety or, or so, so, so that. Starbucks, although the traffic study may, may say there's a few more trips, Starbucks expects that there'll be about between a hundred and a hundred and thirty transactions each hour in the peak in the morning. About fifty-four percent of them would use the drive-through. The remaining would, would park and go into the store. So that represents about one car per minute during these peak times that would be using the drive-through, exiting the drive-through and merging in with the traffic. Other item that, that I noted is, is that exiting vehicles from the traffic, the one car per minute, it, it would be limited conflicts because these, these vehicles wouldn't be coming all out in, in a line. There's, there's time required to, to pay, pay for the food and, and receive the food so that there's, there's adequate gaps between the cars coming up. So that, that's basically to bring you up to speed. There were some questions at the, the initial hearing. One was on an access point onto Maple Street. It's shown here on the plan, on the top of the plan. And we've, and the thought was that during those earlier approvals, there was a condition that that be closed. We reviewed it and Adam, Adam reviewed it as well. There was a condition that that access be closed. We did contact the fire department. They came up with the specifications for how that access should be closed or what kind of gate system. And we would certainly, you know, implement that to the specifications required by the fire department, should the board approve the project and, and require that as a condition. We reached out to the fire department regarding comments on the overall site plan. They did not, I guess, write it down and send it in. The conversation I had with them was that if the, the standards have changed in the NFPA, the way that they review plans and they would have required different radiuses and whatnot in this site plan were, a new site plan being proposed. However, they have responded to the site. There's nothing that changes in this site that would not allow them to respond to emergencies and that, you know, they were satisfied as it is in, in existing condition. We reached out to the police department. In twenty twenty, the, the, the chief then was opposed to drive-throughs, having seen problems at, at a few locations in town that weren't set up quite like this. I did speak to the police chief. He, again, recommended that we install security cameras should the site be, be, be approved. However, he did not have a problem with the queue and he would leave it up to other departments, engineering or planning or the board regarding any radio or, or conflicting movements. So that, I guess, in essence, you know, our, our feeling is, 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 you know, with the, with the way it's set up, it was, it was laid out for queues and drive-throughs. It was built that way. We've shown that there's not a whole heavy load of traffic that would be exiting the, the Starbucks drive-through. And the uses on the site, they kind of complement themselves in when, when they're gonna be busiest. You know, Chili's being busiest at night, Taco Bell during the day, dentist during the day and Starbucks during the morning. I mean, with that, I would open it up to any questions the board may have.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Being done, anybody on the board have any questions?
No.
You, you said something about there wouldn't be a lot of traffic exiting a minute ago, the Starbucks site, but you said that was a hundred and thirty cars an hour, whether they were inside or going through the drive-through through?
Correct, yes.
A hundred and thirty cars an hour is.
Yeah, and I made the point at the, the last meeting, a hundred and thirty cars, you know, represents about one car per minute going through the driveway and, and one car per minute going into a parking spot where two parked cars per minute, you know, exiting the, the site and making a right-hand turn. That, that's not, in my mind, that's, that's not, not a great deal of traffic.
What's the queue time when they reach the window?
Like, once they give their order and then get their product?
I, I wanna say it's, I think it's four or five minutes and there's, there's, it works, works out to roughly about a, a car a minute because there's a six-car stack.
I guess I'm missing something. If it's four or five minutes, by the time they order and then pick it up at the window, how do you get one a minute through?
Well, because they're stacking. So when, when you start at where you order, you know, there's five cars in front of you, each taking a minute. That's, that's how you had it.
And they pull up and then somebody brings it to them or they get it at another?
No, no, they don't.
They have it at another window.
Yeah, you order at a speaker and then, then you pay and receive your, your food at one window.
John, one question, one question I had on the, on the end entrance and the exit. So the access to Maple Street is not, is not going to be there?
I guess the owner would prefer it be there. The board previously thought that it should be discontinued. And then it was a condition, knowing that it was a condition, you know, we feel that if the board continues that recommendation, that, that we'd be, you know, amenable to that and would close it.
Can I ask you a question? Is this the same owner that was the owner back when the board previously took this issue up? So why do we have to condition it again if back in two thousand and six, we conditioned it at that time and the owner was supposed to put it in at that time, did not? My understanding, Adam, is there was a second time that this came before us.
It's a different owner from two thousand and six to now.
It's a different owner?
No, it's the same, same owner.
It's the same owner. So, so, so back in two thousand and six, they were supposed to put it in. That was a condition. They didn't do it. Now you're saying that you're willing to put it in if we condition it again. Why do we have to condition it again if this board already required it and you guys chose not to do it?
Well, I, I wasn't around and I don't know why they didn't do it. The reason why we feel that it's not necessarily should be required is it's, there's very little traffic that, that use it while it's open and.
So have, have you looked at the crash history at the intersection of Maple and twelve?
I, I haven't gotten the numbers.
Fifteen crashes since twenty eighteen, most of them angle crashes. That's, that's a, might not be a concern to the fire chief or the police. That's a concern to me. So again, I would ask why, if we conditioned it in two thousand and six, we now have to condition it again before this owner is willing to do what was required back in two thousand and six?
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna disagree. We, you know, we will close that if, if that's what the board thinks is appropriate now. Of the fifteen cars, I don't know how many of them came from this, this shopping center. There's, you know, a very large, you know, there's a big residential area.
Regardless, it's, it's an intersection with a crash history that is concerning. And this adds additional vehicles exiting out that area where the board did not want it exiting out that area previously.
Okay, well, I think I'm hearing that that should be closed and that, that will happen.
We've, we've kind of always, John, can I speak?
What's that?
Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
We've, we kind of try to condition any of these projects that border neighborhoods, that we don't allow the traffic from the business to go through the neighborhood. That, that's just another point. We've always tried to not do that. They got frontage and they got all the proper everything, then run it based on that. But don't use a side street or a neighborhood street where there's people to use, to have it as an exit and entrance.
My question is, the building that Starbucks is going in, that was the bank, that's the same owner as two thousand and six?
Yes.
Does he own the Chili's restaurant too?
Yes, and the Taco Bells.
And he owns the property? They just leased the property from him?
Yeah, if you recall, this was a truck stop and the town had it.
I remember it was a truck stop.
It was done in phases because the town was responsible for the cleanup. So Chili's was ready before the rest of the site as far as the cleanup progressed. So that's why it was built in different phases and there's actually subdivision lines all because of, you know, the cleanup that was ongoing.
John, I have, I have a question. So the, I think, so, so you've done an assessment on, on hundred to hundred and thirty transactions or cars, right, per hour? Now evenings, you know, you have Chili's traffic there and you also have Taco Bell, which is not just busy in the morning, it's also busy in the evenings. It gets worse towards the night. And what, what are the operating hours for Starbucks?
I think I had it in the packet. I think it's five A M. to nine P M. But the, the, the transactions drop way off a, as you get into the evening, late afternoon and evening. But what I did mention is that we did submit a, a traffic memorandum. It wasn't a full impact study and we compared what was approved to what is existing and, and proposed. And during the weekday, the peak hour would be reduced pretty significantly from what was previously approved. For the Saturday midday, there was a slight increase of less than ten percent cars.
Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve?
We have to close the hearing.
I gotta close the hearing, right. May I have a motion to close the hearing, please?
I'll make the mo, okay.
I'll make the motion.
Have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So, John, I, it is an eye. May I have a motion to approve contingent with the contingency of putting that gate in at that back driveway? That is a must.
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Can I also add the fire departments, there were some.
The fire department's okay with that.
Okay with it. So no other changes that I thought there was some.
This is the gate that would lead traffic either in off Maple or out of the site onto Maple?
Correct.
Correct.
Closed.
Be closed.
Yeah, they, they wanna knock the box and, and some other things and certain clearances and widths and we would do that.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve as we just?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
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 So, John, reason I it is a vote.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda is applicant Robert Lemansky for G L McKinstry Trust for a definitive subdivision plan for a two-lot single-family home development. Sighted approval of a property located at Claire Drive in Linda Avenue, Auburn, Mass. Oh, one five oh one. Continued from our previous meeting.
Good evening. I'm Jason Dubois, D C Engineering and Survey at Charlton. Here with Rob Lemansky, here the property owner. I guess we're here tonight just to brief the board, kind of update. I know this has been going on for quite a while now. So I actually worked on these plans back when they were approved back in two thousand and twelve at Burton Engineering. Since then, I'm not there any longer. I understand there's some changes that will be required or possibly required to get this subdivision back approved. So I guess I just would like to talk about, you know, what would be acceptable to the board to, to move forward with this. I have spoken to the D P W superintendent Joanna Paquin just last week. I had been trying to get ahold of her for, you know, quite a while to sit down with her and go with the stormwater land disturbance permit, stuff that would be required. And as it, as it stood when I left, she wanted a, she wanted a full-size set of, of plans. I guess she hadn't really had a chance to even see, see what the project was. So, you know, at this point, again, we're kind of still waiting to get anything back from her to see what, what she has to say as far as the stormwater goes. But as far as, you know, the original approval back in, in two thousand and twelve, you know, it is a, just a two-lot subdivision. At the end of one of the roads, we're proposing just a, a cul-de-sac, a turnaround. And the other side is just a driveway that, that leads off to the second home. Just wondering the board's input on, you know, waivers that were accepted and, and back in two thousand and twelve, if those would be still acceptable now. The subdivision itself is recorded on the registry, you know, the line work and the paper streets. So I, I think it's just a matter of getting the, the construction standards down on the plans to make sure that they meet the, the new updated requirements that the town would have.
All of the drainage stuff has changed since two thousand and twelve. The town's been being inundated with, with, they have to do with air drainage, so everybody has to comply. There's other changes too that the D P W would know better than me as far as what's required in that, in the conservation commission. They would also know.
Okay, so I will say as far as the drainage goes, back in two thousand and twelve, when there was no land disturbance permit required, D E P, you know, it falls back on the D E P requirements, so anything under five lots does not require. So, anything under five lots does not require stormwater back then. Still is that way with DEP. So, there was no stormwater was actually required back then when we did the original plan, but we still did have basically a full-blown stormwater design. Catch basins, manholes. We had an infiltration basin to mitigate the runoff. And I know that now with the land disturbance permit, taking a look at it, anything over 5,000 square feet of disturbance requires a major application. But in that major application, under the requirements of runoff and recharge, it's only to the maximum extent practicable, which we have already done that. So, I guess that falls back on DPW to see if we can work that out with them. But as far as other items like sidewalks, all items that we had waivers on, just kind of wonder how the board feels about that on those waivers, just so that we can keep the ball rolling and I don't have to come back again and talk about those the next time if we can try and get the stormwater stuff taken care of all at the same time.
Do we have any questions?
I mean, it's been a while since you've been here. I'd like to see you, you know...
A new plan.
A new plan.
Yeah.
A set of plans to...
I know where it is, but I can't remember the...
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's been since they...
About a year.
I don't think there's any big, I don't think there's any big problems other than the formalities with the stormwater...
Land disturbance.
Highway department. I don't think there'll be a lot of changes for me with what I saw before with waivers and stuff like that.
Okay.
The only other thing I would request, you heard what went on with the previous guy doing subdivision in here?
I don't think they were here, John. You were. Robbie wasn't.
For the hammerhead lot or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They didn't care about the neighbors at all. Whatever greener you can keep between the lots and the existing homes, I'm sure they greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
Whenever you have to remove, try to put back.
Yeah, these are very small lots.
The total project, two house lots plus the street, which is just a turnaround, totals 35,000 square feet. It's less than an acre.
And then it backs up by the turnpike?
Turnpike, yeah.
Right.
I think it's actually even, I think it's about 25,000 square feet.
25,000 by 10,000?
Yeah, it was like a half an acre or less.
Is the project, is it huge? No? Do we want to make sure we do it right? Of course we do. And I guess one of the benefits of one of the streets is now that it won't be a dead end, it'll actually be a turnaround. So, that's a positive. And like Jay was saying, this is that for most of it, the drainage standards for stormwater. As much as they now apply the stormwater, but when you look at the regulation, Jay, has the regulation changed from 2012 to now?
Well, the town has adopted additional state, no.
The state, no.
No.
The state hasn't really changed. The town is going to step forward and stick with scooters. And I, you know, I know I was talking to, who was it? Ilysh?
Ilysh.
Right. And I said, I remember my dad, his garden would have 100-foot rows and 40, 50 feet wide. I says, according to what you'd now have in town, you'd have to apply for a birth disturbance permit to do his garden. It seemed a little bit...
Yeah, right.
Times change.
Yes, times have changed.
John, a couple of questions. I think one is, if, I mean, we'll definitely see the updated plans and then the peer review as well, right? It has to go. The fire department had concerns with the turnaround and the access, I think, the width of the driveways in the last, I remember in the last discussions, I believe.
If that makes...
Yeah.
My son, Ross, who does construction. And he had gone down to see the chief. And the chief, and again, I don't want to say some was right, some was wrong. The chief was surprised that the comment that was made was new. Okay, and yes, is that a perfect distance around?
We just need you to talk into the mic for the minutes, yeah.
Oh, thank you. I mean, is that a perfect distance as far as the turnaround? As far as what, why? You know, it's ample enough, I think, for the apparatus because that was looked at the last time we were here in 2012. And it was, again, because that street is only four houses long. So, once you turn up the street, there's two houses on the right, two houses on the left, and that's the end of it. So, based on the surroundings, it seemed to work. So, and again, we appreciate whatever can be done. We're trying to make this thing happen, and if it happens, that's great.
Just to go a little further too, I think right now Claire Drive is like a 200-foot road, 22 feet wide, and it just stops. So, to get to those houses, they would have to back up all the way. We're proposing a 75 feet of pavement turnaround at the end of it. So, to me, it seems like it's an improvement either way for plow trucks and the fire trucks.
Do we have any questions?
I'm good.
No.
May I have a motion to continue to our next meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Smara?
Aye.
Barkesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
So, John Rigg is an aye. It is a vote. Doesn't work anyway.
Yeah, I don't think it was turned on.
By all means.
Two weeks?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think, John, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Under other business, there is no discussion, no modification. Decisions for 12 to 14 stores three has been passed down the line and signed. May I have a motion to approve meeting minutes as submitted from our 328-2023 meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
So, John Rigg is an aye. It is a vote. Next up on the agenda is new business unforeseen by the chair, none by me. Whoever town planner update housing production plan?
The town's working on updating its housing production plan. There was a survey that went live on Friday. There's a link on the town's website and on Facebook. Trying to get the community's input on the housing needs. This is a required plan by the state. Make sure we get the town's thoughts on it. So, I'd encourage you to take the survey, show it to your networks, if you have the people involved on Facebook, if you want to push it on that, that would be great. Short survey, can be 10 minutes long.
And it's on a computer?
Yeah.
You sent it?
I can send it to you. And an associate member.
Just going to save it up. We still need an associate member, so if you're interested, please apply. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Smara?
Aye.
Barkesh? Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
So, John Rigg is an aye. It is a vote. The meeting is now adjourned.